Good afternoon, welcome to the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners work session for Wednesday, April 21st, 2021, 1:01 PM. My name is Ty Menzger, Chair of the Board. I see Commissioner Karina Mihia, County Manager Mira Chavez, our Director of Public Works, Jennifer Walker, and key members of her team. For today's one-hour session regarding state of the water and sewer utilities, informational briefing only. Public can follow along with us through our Thurston County YouTube channel or through our conference line of 3602529020. The PIN is 1234. And we are ready to go. I'll let County Manager introduce our topic today.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Edwards excused this afternoon, so just to let you know. And so your work here today is very timely to hear from Public Works staff, the state of the water and sewer utilities the county owns and manages. Those include the Grand Mound, Tam O Shan, Boston Harbor, and Olympic View. Each one of those have a little bit nuances to within. And parallel to this, you authorize the study to see, looking at the consolidation of those utilities as well. So all that in a way ties together. I myself am looking forward to this presentation, so who's going to take the lead? Jennifer?
Scott will take the, Scott, sorry. I've been in back-to-back meetings. My apologies. Tim, Tim will kick this off, but I do want to say, just as I mentioned for Parks and Trails, that we have a small but mighty team for Parks and Trails. That same description applies to our water and sewer utilities. It's a small team that's responsible for some essential services for the county, and you're looking at some of them, a few of them now. So I just want to give them a tremendous amount of praise and credit for the work that they do. So with that, I will kick it over to Tim.
Long time no see, Kevin.
Hello, Romero.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I will attempt to share my screen. And... What are we seeing? Are we seeing the PowerPoint?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, okay. Very good. So far, so good. Okay, so I am Tim Wilson. I'm the Water Resources Division Manager here in Public Works. I have with me today Karen Wees, who is the Financial and Asset Management Division Manager. I also have Kevin Patching, our Water and Sewer Operations Supervisor, and Zainab Najadi, our Technical Services Manager. Before, before I get going and talking about the agenda, I wanted to give just a high level, some high-level information about the utilities in general to kind of frame the discussion. We have seven individual utilities that serve 811 connections. They provide a critical public health and safety function and cannot be interrupted. These are services that need to be operated 24/7, 365. And as Jennifer mentioned, we have, this is all done with a very small, highly certified crew, the Kevin leads of Kevin and four other operators. You might ask why we have utilities in the, in the first place. With the exception of Grand Mound, all of the systems were acquired by the county as a state mandate as a result of either failing or being poorly managed by the communities that they serve. So in that, in that case, the state mandates that the county take over those systems. And that, that is what happened with the majority of our systems. While we maintain utility advisory committees at two of the communities to provide input, it is the county's sole responsibility by statute to properly plan, finance, and operate these utilities. And what we're hoping to show today with Board of County Commissioners support, that staff is taking proactive measures to set all of our utilities up for continued success. And with that, what we are going to be talking about today, and we're going to take a little bit of a collaborative approach in that you will hear from most of us during this briefing. We're going to start out with utilities' mission and success metrics, some success metrics that we consider when thinking about the utilities. We're going to talk about the individual utility locations and customer information. And when we do that, I would just like you all to be aware that Kevin and his staff, in addition to operating the facilities very well, also puts on a great tour. So if anybody is interested in coming out, I know Commissioner Menzger, you did a couple of years ago to Grand Mound. We are more than happy to facilitate that and would love to have you out there. We'll also be talking about some organizational, operational improvements that have occurred over the last two or three years. We'll talk about current and future projects, and we will talk about challenges and opportunities. So first submission of the water and sewer utilities. The way I would like to frame this, I guess, is that, that we have really two drivers to what we do. The first is a required driver. This is, as I mentioned before, these are the county's responsible responsibility. They came to us by the regulatory agencies and by statute, and we are required by RCW to manage and regulate the utilities. So when we say manage and regulate the utilities, it's kind of twofold. We need to operate to meet the regulatory requirements. So we need to think in terms of potable water quality, and the water that is coming through our customers' tap is, is of good, good quality and meets all of the state requirements for that. And we also need to think about wastewater treatment thresholds. So what comes into our wastewater treatment plants and what we ultimately discharge into either groundwater or surface water needs to meet thresholds as well. The other part of that state-required mandate is that we properly plan and finance the utilities to address aging infrastructure and new regulatory requirements. So kind of twofold, and we'll talk a little bit more in some of the upcoming slides about the results of not planning and financing correctly for, for the utilities. The other, the other driver for our mission of the water and sewer utilities is, is chosen internally. And I put up on the board a mission statement that we just discussed in meetings with Kevin's team, the Water and Sewer Operators. We've had some ongoing discussions about how we can't, what we do well, what we don't do well, how we can improve. And it started out by a discussion of what we are trying to do. So this is, this came directly from the operations team, and it states that our mission is to serve the highest-quality drinking water, provide exceptional customer service, and exceed the wastewater collection and treatment requirements while protecting the environment and people we serve. So even though this was talked about by the operations team, by extension, this applies to our planning and engineering teams as well. Okay, I'll talk real quick about some success metrics. So basically, to achieve success in meeting our objectives, we look at a couple of things again. We look at reliability of service. So again, seven facilities, all with spatial challenges and that they are all over the county, and, and we, we operate those 24/7, 365. So we want to take steps to make sure that that service is not interrupted. This includes also solid planning and forecasting of issues and the financing of capital improvements. The other success measure is high-quality output. So again, we're looking to regularly meet or exceed state and federal potable water standards. That's at the, at the top, quality of what we're providing. And similar for the sewer utilities. And we regularly receive, Kevin's group regularly receives outstanding performance awards from Department of Ecology for how we manage and operate our wastewater treatment plants. So we've been in front of you before, kind of featuring those awards that, that we continue to get with our, our sewer utility. So some of the metrics, 2019 totals, we delivered 97.8 million gallons of potable water. 80.3 million gallons of wastewater was effectively treated prior to discharge. Again, with the seven facilities, we, we operate three water treatment facilities and four wastewater treatment plants. And, and again, we receive awards from Ecology on the, on the wastewater side quite often. So it's easy to talk about success metrics and what it looks like to succeed. It's, it's really important also that we understand what, what not succeeding would, would look like. So I want to talk about that real quick. What, what failure or lack of success would look like when you think of water or sewer utilities? And we've all seen this in the news from time to time. A potable water failure in Flint, Michigan, in which there's a breakdown in, in the system, either operationally or infrastructure-related, old infrastructure, and this results in people getting sick. So it's, it's very important that we think about that as well when we're managing these utilities. On the sewer side, that would, that would look, and we've also seen this on the news, as untreated wastewater or sewer discharge reaching Puget Sound. Another failure on the financial side would be similar to what Mason County experienced in 2019, I believe, was an audit finding with a corrective action plan. So just a high-level look at where our utilities are spatially within the county. Again, four communities that, that we serve, Grand Mound. Our newest utility is, is to the south. It is our largest community served. We have a, both a water and sewer utility there. In the north, we have the Boston Harbor Water and Sewer Utility. We have the Tam O Shan Utility and the Olympic View. And with that, Kevin is going to talk a little bit about the individual utilities.
Good afternoon. This is Kevin, the Water and Sewer Utilities Supervisor. Talk a little bit about Grand Mound, first of all, being our largest utility. The service connections right now on the slide shows 390, but it might have just went up this week. We've got some housing development going on, so it continues to grow. What's unique about Grand Mound is, compared to the other utilities, is our commercial and our industrial customers. With the Great Wolf Lodge being about the size of, you know, 500 homes. Maple Lane School has changed, excuse me, Maple Lane School has changed hands a few times, but they're still a big provider of sewer for us. And then, of course, both of the I-5 rest areas that are north of Grand Mound, we, we handle their sewer also. So it's an interesting, that utility is kind of interesting and unique in that regard. The water, it talks about, you know, water main, you know, 17 miles of water main, 15 miles of sewer. The water main up there is all relatively new, the, since 99. So we don't have a lot of issues going on with the water. The sewer side, we have normal sewer collections, gravity, but we also have vacuum sewer, and we're one of the few areas in Washington State that has it. One other spot is out on the coast. So vacuum sewer is a little interesting in itself. And then we have pump stations, which is, and pressure sewer. So all that goes to a wastewater treatment plant. In history, that plant right now is, that plant is only at a one-third capacity. And as we grow the utility down there and start getting more sewer, that, that plant can grow up to 1.2 million gallons a day. Right now, we're seeing anywhere from 200,000 to 300,000 gallons a day. So we, their intent is to, to grow that wastewater treatment plant and expand it to meet the needs of our customers. So some, some recent things that we did was to improve Dangsdowne Grand Mound was the addition of a second reservoir, it shows in the picture. That was needed, obviously, for growth and for fire flow. And right now, right now, we have some unique challenges because the growth, while you're trying to manage your reservoir and chlorine residual levels and all that stuff, it's, it comes as a, it'd be actually better if we had a few more customers on it, so the water use was, was more. But they did, that reservoir turn, excuse me, that reservoir turned out great. It was managed by, by the Teresa Parsons Group, and it was probably one of the smoothest projects I've been a part of. So we've also been upgrading our SCADA controls, the electrical controls, and our communications at Grand Mound. And since we've done that, we've eliminated a lot of middle-of-the-night callouts and alarms and things like that. And that's been an ongoing theme for all of our utilities, just to, just to have our consistency in operations and controls and alarms, so we can cut down on middle-of-the-night callouts or a storm callouts.
Kevin?
Yes?
Can I ask a question?
You bet.
Okay, so how many callouts were you receiving before this? I'm just curious.
So what, a lot of our calls are related to weather or power outages. And so we would, you might go for a couple of months and only get one, and then you might have four or five in the same night. So we still have some issues we're working with, but most everything that we have a problem with is a power-related, either a power blip or, you know, something that, that causes a power blip. And we're working, we're working our way through those to eliminate them. So we haven't had any, for example, the last two weeks, but there was a two-week period where we had one every day, so.
Thank you.
Couple other projects we have coming up. Those, that plant, like I said, is built in 99, so it's time to do some maintenance through the clarifiers. We're going to rebuild and recote one this summer. Looking at eventually Class A reclaimed water, and if you're not familiar with that, is where we would take that water, you know, we'd come out and we'd filter it and it'd come out so clean that we could put it in the creek upstream of the wastewater plant. Currently, it goes out to the Shays River, and we meet all the requirements to do that. But Class A reclaimed water makes it, you know, as close as you can to drinking water. So those are all things for the future. And then, like I talked about a little bit, the expansion. So one of the things, you know, development is increasing, and it just depends on what gets approved down there, if it's going to be apartments or homes or more commercial. So we're looking forward to the expansion of that utility and, and meeting our customer needs. We go, thank you, Tim. The Boston Harbor Utility, so the Boston Harbor Utility was acquired in 1990. And this one was, they had a lot of failing septic systems out in that area. And when the county initially took it over, there was, it was all mostly small cabins, small homes, weekend places. And they went in and retrofit old step, excuse me, old septic tanks with this new step system. So the way it works is, customer flushes, flushes their toilet, the solids stay in that tank, and the liquids go to the wastewater treatment plant. And then we have a six-year cycle where we go and pump tanks. Some of the interesting things that we inherited with this system is, they might have, there's an apartment out there with four apartments and one tank. We have two or three homes on single tanks. And then, so those kind of things cause issues just because you might have a tank in one person's yard, but on the other house has the control panel. So there's been all kinds of, we've rendered all kinds of wonderful surprises working on that step system. Boston Harbor has one commercial customer, and that's the Marina. And then they have a large commercial customer, which is the Boston Harbor Elementary School. The water out in Boston Harbor, the water out in Boston Harbor was upgraded also in 1990, and we have a 500,000-gallon reservoir out there, which is perfect for water flow, fire flow, excuse me, and, and meet the customer needs. We do during the summer get, we go, we run our well pumps high hours. And what I mean by that is typically, we could run both those well pumps anywhere from 20 to 24 hours a day on the peak demand days. So we're up against our, our limits there. We haven't done that in the last couple of years, but it was a pretty common thing, you know, four or five years ago. So water conservation has helped a little bit, accuracy of meters, having better chlorinate, excuse me, better filtration has helped. But we're still, that's one of the concerns, is, is meeting our customer requirements as far as water flow on the days where it's really hot. So hopefully, education to the customers about water conservation will, will help with that. The, so this little system, basically, just reiterate on Boston Harbor, the solids say in the tank, we, we have a contractor that pumps those, and then the liquids go to the wastewater treatment plant and, and they're disposed of there, so. And they go out to the, the effluent is treated and then goes out to the Bud Bay Inlet right next to the Boston Harbor Marina, so. Thanks, Tim. Tam O Shan Utilities. This one, like we talked about, was acquired in the 80s. This has got some smaller water pipe. It does have, it does have enough fire flow to meet, to have six fire hydrants in the system. It's a 44, excuse me, 60,000-gallon reservoir there, an old concrete reservoir. What you're looking at is right outside the reservoir, we had to do, there was a leak for a long time, and we had to do some modifications to, to the line. And the line, it shifted, so if you look at the picture, you can see there's a couple 22s and a 45. The old line was plastic and it shifted, and to make this meet up, we had to add some new fittings. This, this system gives us a hard time on the water side. We have some, some issues with the water. When you chlorinate, you end up with some disinfection byproducts, and we've been battling that for several years now. So we're looking in the future to do some kind of treatment or possibly well in a different location, so we don't run into the same issues. And that, that's a pretty expensive project for 92, 93 water customers.
How expensive?
I'm sorry, would you ask that again?
How expensive?
Two or $300,000 would be like on the low side if we were to, if we were to go with treatment. One of the issues there, that's, we're allowed to pull 140 gallons a minute out of the ground. And so, so having a filter system that can filter 140 gallons a minute compared to something that would filter 60 gallons a minute is significantly higher. But, but Department of Health won't let us, if we're going to filter it, they want to filter at full capacity. So, so that's kind of where we run into some issues. And we've done a little bit of research on it, and we're going to do some more research this year to see what options we have. But yeah, we're looking at over $200,000 for some kind of treatment. This, the also, the wastewater treatment plant, when it was upgraded in 2003, there was a plant that was down right where the current plant is, and it was about a third of the size. And I'm really not sure how they were meeting the MPDS permit, but we also inherited Beverly Beach Sewer, and theirs was right down on the water. And again, I'm not sure, looking at what they had, how they met their permit requirements. But now everything is pumped to a larger wastewater treatment plant. And it's a, it's the same style of plant as Boston Harbor, but this takes the solids and the liquids all to the wastewater plant. And it's been, it's relatively, it's run relatively well. That, it's an older plant, and the, and the parts, some of the parts are difficult to get and expensive to get, come from overseas. And it's one of those, it's one of the package-style plants, and so they're, it's been sold by three different companies. So right now, getting parts for it is getting kind of extremely difficult. One thing we did this last summer was did a little bit of upgrades on the electrical system, and we were able, it was all proprietary before, and so we were able to get all the information. Because of the location, you can't dial into that plant. You don't have internet down there. So we're able to get all the proprietary electrical control diagrams, and now we have a local electrician that helps us anytime we have issues. But it's, it's a unique and challenging water and sewer system there. Any questions on any of those yet? All right, last one's Olympic View. And Olympic View has basically 28 homes with, with the step tanks or septic tanks in their yard. And all of their liquid is pumped up to this drain field. So if we look at this picture, the, the wood panel you see underneath that is a manifold, and everything comes up into this, up right up above that. And then it doses 1,000 gallons, does it about four or five times a day. It'll dose that drain field. We did some modifications and upgrades with the drain field, working with an engineering firm. And once we were, once we made those changes, this drain field has been pretty much bulletproof. We were able to rotate which legs we have off. It's, it's easier to maintain and mow. We've had to remove a few trees, a few hazardous trees. But if you were to drive up there now and look at it, it looks just like if, you know, it looks like somebody's hayfield. It's a, it really is a nice drain field. The neighbors, when I first started here a few years ago, the neighbors were, did a lot of complaining about smells and odors and what it looked like. And now the neighbor calls, and every time they mow and tells us, thank you, you know, how nice it looks. So this drain field used to be, the State Department of Health and shellfish are, they kind of manage this and manage us, used to be a local county health department did. One thing that I'll say about this drain field is, it does get looked at quite heavily because there's a big, right out in the bay, just, just west of this is one of the largest shellfish producers in the United States, and they have a lot of oyster beds out there. So if we had any issues, we, they would be letting us know, so. One thing, just for me, for my group, I've been with the county now for seven years, and I will say, the utilities, we're, we're still playing catch-up in the utilities, but I would say that our structure that we have now with Jennifer in place and with Tim and the, us being part of Water Resources, and then with Zainab's engineering team, I would say that the county's done a great job getting things lined up so we can be more successful and manage these utilities better. And, and a little shout-out to Romero, because I think it was really his hand that started this whole process. But like I said, I've been here seven years, and it's never, the utilities have never been as good a condition as they are. And we're still got a long ways to go playing catch-up. But I just want to say from how much I appreciate the support we get to do things right. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Kevin. So, so as you're hearing, all of these different facilities are, are unique and have their own challenges. And have their own uh challenges. Um they're very different than than Lot or the cities. Uh that have a a large, large base. A bit of a bit of a challenge. Uh they all require different state certifications for the operators. They are they are not consistent as far as that goes, so. It 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 takes a different level of certification to operate some of our facilities as opposed to what it would take uh to operate others. Um since two thousand and nineteen, there there've been a few um organizational and op- operational improvements. Uh that have occurred um in in two thousand and nineteen, Public Works worked with HR to. Um to develop a and a utility operator series, uh uh operator one through three classification series. Along with uh Kevin's position that the uh operation supervisor. What this does is is it allows us to recruit operators and allows a path for them to. Uh get their foot in the door first and and be able to uh work with some of our utilities, but also it allows for them to. Uh achieve their certifications and and uh have a career path. And uh it also uh results in improved coverage for our facilities, so that's been a a good change.
Tim, I wanna I'm gonna step in real quick, so um this was this was huge because we. Um as Kevin mentioned, that I think he has four technicians and then him himself, four operators and then himself, but they couldn't all operate. Uh the same facilities, they had different ones that they could go to, so they couldn't go to all of them. And so we looked at how do we, you know, how do we build this system? Um and and this kind of career path um to allow for that coverage. Um because there was real concern that, you know, you were just one flew away from, you know, from not having coverage and and we can't not have that, so. So that was huge. Um and as well as, we also know that there are for this type of work, there are. The average age um is considerably uh higher than uh. Than people that are just starting out in their careers. So we wanted to be able to um. Put a system in place that we could bring people in at a lower level, because there is some uniqueness um to operating each of those plants. Um and learn and grow in the position, so it it was. Yeah, it was something that HR uh we were closely with and it was very, they were very helpful in in being able to do that, so. Thank you, Tim, sorry.
Oh, great point, thank you. So the next im- improvement, uh organizational improvement uh is the creation of wa- the Water Resources Technical Services Team, of which Zainab manages. And it's important to note that this this uh this is not new staff, this is repurposing, uh if you will, of existing staff. It came about as uh part of the reorganization of of portions of the Storm and Surface Water Utility into Public Works. Uh along with that came um the engineering and utility planning staff that was. Um unique to the Storm and Surface Water Utility. Uh and now we utilize their expertise to to support the water utility, so that's been a a fantastic change. I think it's. Uh provided a lot better support for Kevin's group and it is allowing us to catch up. In some of our our planning and administrative updates. Um the the last uh improvement, very important, uh just the change in the financial and customer service um. Program, uh Karen has created a utilities team to provide high-quality customer assistance and. Establish clear and consist- consistent billing standards and procedures. So under Karen's leadership, there have been significant improvements, we would all agree with. Uh i- in terms of both internal and external customer service. Uh some examples of that is just um you know that um that team's role in. In budgeting, rate evaluations, uh customer interactions. Um utility advisory committee elections and and the list goes on, so a great improvement there uh that. That is assisting the utilities across the board in terms of customer service.
Hey, Tim?
Yes.
I've heard, um I know there's some discussions that have been going on over the years about um like a one-water concept that includes. Some elements of CPED and environmental health and stormwater, and I'm wondering if that would extend all the way to this. Group as well, or is that or is this group kind of outside those discussions?
Well, eh great question and and I've I've thought about that, Commissioner Metzer, it it depends a little bit in um. In how broad uh and how we define what one-water means. Uh the all of the utilities, not just water and sewer, but also the storm and surface water are. Operate within a a a a regulatory framework and sideboards, so to some degree uh that. You know, it it fits, that would we would be a one uh part of that. When you get into the water and sewer utilities specifically, it it's it's a little bit of a stretch. As far as fitting it into that concept. Okay, and um with that, Zainab Najadi, our technical services manager. Is going to talk about recent and planned investments in planning and administrative initiatives as well as uh infrastructure improvements.
Yeah, so Kevin stole my thunder a little bit, because he talked about a couple of my projects or our projects. Um but some infra- infrastructure improvements um that have either been recently completed or currently in the works include our asset management program. That's an ongoing effort to inventory all our assets and then once we've been able to inventory them, we're gonna use that information to. Um track work orders and hopefully forecast costs in the future. Um our Grand Mount Reservoir, which was completed in twenty nineteen, which Kevin mentioned, to provide additional capacity down in the Grand Mount area and fire flow. Um we recently completed an upgrade of the wastewater treatment plant electrical control system at Boston Harbor, as well as we are currently planning. Um and it will go to construction in the fall, a replacement of the Boston Harbor wastewater treatment plant generator and both those projects. Um were completed to um or earn the works to replace outdated and failing infrastructure and improve our system reliability. And then the other project that Kevin did mention was the Ground Mound Clarifier Number Two rebuild and recoding, and that's gonna extend the lifespan of our existing clarifier. So this next slide, um it is a little bit hard to read, because it's really tiny, but the important. Number here on this slide is eleven point six million dollars. That are, those are the planned capital improvements over the next six years for our systems. So in our older systems like Tamashan and Boston Harbor, we're gonna be focusing on addressing failing eh failing and aging infrastructure and improving system reliability. While in Grand Maun- Grand Mount, we're gonna be building capacity to serve new connections and supporting and promoting economic development in that area. And one thing to really remember about. Water and sewer infrastructure projects is that there is very little grant money available to support these types of projects. Um typically, any grants that are out there are really focused on distressed and low-income communities and and we, for our utilities, we don't meet those requirements typically. So um some planning and administrative updates and improvements that we're currently working on and will be coming before the Board of County Commissioners over the next eight months. Include our water system plan updates, um including our satellite management agency plans and our Part B water system specific plans for Grand Mount and Boston Harbor. These plans are required to comply with state law. And they're also really helpful, because they help us identify needed improvements for our systems over the ten and twenty-year timeframe. Um and they also help us preserve our water rights that we're not currently using under municipal water law. Um we have the Water and Sewer Code update, um which we'll be bringing before you um next week. Um with some proposed um recommended improvements to bring us in line with industry standards. Um we also have the Water and Sewer Development Standards Update, um which will you will see um towards the end of May. Um our Water and Sewer Development Standards were last updated in two two thousand and seven, so it's fourteen years ago, so um really need to work on bringing. Um up to current standards when you think about how fast technology changes. Um and then we also have some rate adjustments to address some escalating costs that we're seeing with our utilities. Um in order to make sure that we can um operate and maintain our utilities um at a sufficient level in the future. And that um I believe is coming before the board in middle of June.
Zainab, the Water and Sewer um code updates. I'm just remembering the struggle we had with the last set um where it took. It took for some reason, I can't remember why, but it took several briefings and there was a lot of confusion and then it seemed like. The issues were quite complicated and so by the time we got to the next briefing, the commissioners had kind of forgotten like what the details were uh from the previous briefing. So if there's a way to make those simpler and more get them like bang them out, get them done, uh that's probably a good thing, because I know it's quite complicated. I don't know what you plan to bring for to us, but if it's anything like the last set.
Um so I believe you're referring to the Storm and Utility Code Update for Rates and Fees. And um we have been working with our communication specialists here to to figure out how to make. Um how to be able to present the information in a much more clear fashion. Um and provide easy references for the commissioners to go back and look at after the meeting, if you need to. And the um we'll cover this next week too, but the next briefing. We won't be asking to set a public hearing, we're actually gonna go, we want to go out and talk to the community first before we set up a public hearing, just to get more input.
Thank you, Zainab. So um just wanted to talk real briefly about some challenges and opportunities uh with um with managing these utilities. So on the on the challenge side, uh new regulatory requirements are are always an issue uh with with uh utility management. Uh a big one that we are tracking eh eh and that there isn't uh a mandate on yet, but we expect soon is nutrient removal. Uh which is tied to our our sewer utilities. Um all of these uh new regulatory requirements require additional staff certifications, uh additional process and testing requirements. In some cases, infrastructure improvement uh and additional reporting requirements, so. Um planning for uh funding that and anticipating that is is a big uh challenge for the utilities. Uh again, there's there's ten individual utility funds um on a on the financial side. Uh that we're managing here. Um uh it it lends itself to rate volatility if there is a. Uh unexpected failure or breakdown within one of these smaller utilities that we have not planned for. Um then we have to address that, so um it it lends itself to rate volatility. It's higher cost to manage. Um you heard in the lot briefing last week about, you know, just the difference in. Uh having multiple smaller utilities that are out there spatially. And again, um uh Robin spoke to a little bit in in our briefing earlier this morning about just that economy of scale. Being able to spread costs out over a over a larger base, um that continues to be a challenge for these utilities. Uh aging infrastructure, you heard Zainab uh speak about what we're planning to invest. Uh in these or what you're planning to invest in these uh in that uh in in the six-year CIP, eleven point six million dollars, I believe. Gosh, I believe three point four million of that is is REIT uh funded. And so our utility rates really uh currently do not support the needed capital improvements that. Um that we're expecting other that are coming down the the line. Uh another challenge is just staff recruitment and retention and this relates. Uh primarily to our engineering and planning side. We have key positions that have that have been open for recruitment for some time now. Uh and we uh are not having a lot of success in in recruiting. Those uh specialties. Uh we've also had some turnover uh within the engineering and planning. Team over the last couple of years and and each time that that happens, our planning efforts specifically. Uh our water system plans and and those types of things take a big step backwards and and um. You know, it's just that much harder harder for us to move these efforts forward. We're now at a place where Zainab and her team are doing an excellent job of of trying to get some of these water system plans and the code updates and the standard updates. Across the finish line, so um that has been a challenge that that we're managing through, but um always an issue. Uh some great opportunities coming down the road. Uh these these updated uh water system plans could make us eligible for more grant and loan funding. Uh Zainab may want to clarify, but eh uh until those are in place and. And uh approved by the state, there's just a lot of uh loan funding specifically that we're just not eligible for, so getting. Getting those water system plans updated and across the finish line are super important. Um the Cost of Service Study, which is underway, um we'll do a couple of things. It's going to inform proper rate setting. Uh regardless of of whether we look to consolidation or not, it's going to. Uh consider administrative efficiencies. Uh it's gonna take a look at, hey, what is the cost of. Of of managing multiple different uh utility advisory committees and uh ten different funds. Um and may may provide some opportunities one way or another to inform uh some good decisions. Uh it's not on the slide, but just want to mention again, I know it's been mentioned before, just. Um the asset management improvements and and that program that's been uh supported by the board so far and. We are making good progress there in in mapping of our infrastructure and doing. Um uh an assessment of everything we have out there to uh better inform our our decisions, so. Really, both both the Cost of Service Study and our asset management uh uh efforts are. Initiatives that are intended to inform sound utility management decisions, so uh good progress is being made with uh both of those fronts. So um one last thing, just finally, as as Zainab mentioned before. Uh the board is going to be seeing a lot of us in the in the coming weeks and months. Uh to discuss planning and administrative updates, all designed to better manage these utilities and. Set uh each uh community and utility up for success going into the future, so. Uh again, you will be seeing a lot of us in the future. Um I uh again, I guess uh with with just an extension of invitation to come out, if you have a free afternoon. Uh set up some time and and um that uh take a tour of the facilities. It's, I think it's really informative and and would be really helping for. All involved. And with that, before I go to questions, I guess, um Karen, I believe you're on, we haven't given you an opportunity to say anything. Do you have anything to add or does any other? Any staff have anything else to add that we've missed? Okay, and hearing none, does the board have any any questions?
Uh, Tim, can you stop sharing your screen?
Absolutely, maybe. Let's see here.
There we are, good. Okay, uh, you can hear anything further? Have a good overview.
No, uh thank you so much for the presentation, though. It it's, it helps me understand a little bit better, just all the different aspects of. Of this project, I mean, I'd heard about it, talked about it before, but. It's it's nice actually seeing what, you know, um county staff are referring to now, thank you.
Know what a step system is? I didn't know that until I was on lot board for a few months.
Yeah.
Can you explain that, Kevin? How a step system is structured?
Yeah, you bet. So um coming out of the house is a is a standard gravity line comes from the house to the tank and that tank is is just like a septic tank. And the tank um internally designed, the solids, if it's the new style ones, the solids stay on one side of the tank and the liquid goes to the other side. And there's a screen and a baffle that makes your only clean, we'll call it clean gray water or black water goes to the wastewater plant. The old, the the problem we run into in Boston Harbor is the old. Um, the old, the, the problem we run into in Boston Harbor is the old tanks were just one big tank. So the solids would fill up both sides and the basket and the screen would get clogged. But basically that, all that does is it holds all the solids, pumps the liquids to a wastewater plant. And then we're on a six-year rotation now, uh, for single tanks to come in and pump them. And we, uh, when the, when the truck shows up, our guys have pumped the liquid down. So they only are pumping and hauling off the solids. Uh, saves us some money. But yeah, that's basically how they work. They hold the solids in the tank, the liquid goes to a, to a treatment facility or to, um, like an Olympic view, it goes to a drain field. Uh, and the cleaner you keep that basket in the tank, the, the better your treatment opportunities are. So if we think about, uh, Boston Harbor, by the time the tank does a lot of treating of the wastewater and, and the system before it ever makes it to the wastewater plant. So we're getting treatment at the tank and treatment at the wastewater plant. So it works out pretty good.
Yeah. I think of it as like a cooperative septic, you know, like you've got the neighborhood and they combine everybody. Instead of everybody having their own little septic system and tanks, you've got it combined and then it can be pumped at some later time. And you get better treatment and you can, that's infrastructure. So there, there is a lot in Lacy, you know, when you're all, there's step, step system that, uh, serve a lot of customer.
Yeah, they're, you're a, a great alternative for basically failing septic systems. And, and it's, it's easier to send, put a three or four inch pressure main, uh, four feet underground than putting a whole bunch of other infrastructure in. So, uh, I, if they're working well and they're maintained, they really, they do a good job.
Okay. Uh, Romero, do you have anything you wanted to follow up with?
No, sir. Great presentation. Looking forward to see what the details of the, of the code amendment that you propose and so. And that will be, I guess, next week's briefing.
Bring your thinking cap, Commissioner, after the code amendment. Okay. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Keep up the good work.